If I could have everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for a moment of silence. Thank you. And as usual, start off the meeting with a quote. "If an egg is broken by outside force, life ends; if broken by an inside force, life begins." "Great Things Always Begin From the Inside," by Tamara Coolish. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perth, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
A man.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with recognitions, Ms. Purdy.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Tillet, colleagues and community members, thank you for joining us this evening. I first would like to start off with our February Senior of the Month, who has excelled academically, taking multiple honors, advanced placement, dual enrollment courses, all while attending PCOS in high school. They are a member of the multiple honor societies at PHS, including NHS, National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, German Honor Society, Quill and Scroll, and Ro Kappa where they serve as president. This outstanding leader of PCOS in high school's been very active during her time here. They are a member of the PCOS in high varsity softball team, earning a first-team all-district honor. And this student is also a member of the Varsity Scholastic Bowl, as well as the PHS Model UN, where they serve as the general secretary. Additionally, this student has been a vital part of the Journalism Club, serving as both Assistant Editor-in-Chief, and is currently this year's Editor-in-Chief. The February Senior of the Month is a hard-working, kind person who is always ready to pitch in and help when needed. Please help me by congratulating Taylor Jones as our February Senior of the Month. And Taylor will be joining the Scholastic Bowl to compete at Stage this weekend, so good luck at that. So last week, well, actually earlier in the month, two of our, I'm sorry, 22 of our PCOS in high school seniors attended the District Course Eight event at Christopher Newport University, accompanied by their amazing director, Ms. Rose Reed. During that time, All-State Course additions were held, and 15 of our students tried out. From those trials, PHS had four young people recognized with All-State placements. And as I call your name, will you please join me? Senior Abigail Smith, Alto One Delegate. Junior Zana Weam, Soprano Two Delegate. Mayor Lund, Soprano One Delegate. Congratulations on your amazing accomplishment. It is very well deserved. Moving along to our high school, the PMS also had 10 students attend the District Course event at CNU, and had five representatives who made the Middle School All-Virginia Honor Choir. We incredibly proud of these students, and especially grateful to the Director, Mrs. Rebecca Wade, who has helped support and bring out the best in our students. The 2024 Middle School All-Virginia Honor Choir delegates from PCOS in middle school are Molly Firth, Savannah Gordon, Cameron Monfils, Emilio Ramirez, and alternate Ellie Stevens. Mrs. Wade, would you mind coming up? And I'm sorry, Ms. Reed, that we didn't have you come up to join the picture. Would you like to do it again? I would like to. Can we? I think some of them left, so we'll have to, maybe I'll Photoshop you in. Thank you for understanding. But we look forward to hearing your voices, who are middle school delegates, as you continue your academic career here in PCOS, and so congratulations to everybody. That concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you. Brings us to presentations and reports. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay. We understand if you'd like to leave. Congratulations. Fantastic work by our students. Vice versa. Okay. Ms. Brown, we have you first for instructional update.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of our Board, community, and staff of PCOS and City Public Schools. Tonight, I am very excited because I get an opportunity to bring to you information regarding our textbook adoption that we will be asking you to vote on tonight. So, we came last period, or last time we met, and we discussed our Into Reading program from HMH. The Into Reading program is the one that has been selected by our teachers through a long process that we'll kind of go and give you an overview again tonight. And then, we've had a 30-day window where we've had our public come in, review it, they could review it in person or online, and we'll get to some specifics as well. So just a quick recap for our timeline for our adoption process. We began in the summer/fall of 2023. This is the opportunity where VDOE started to put out some of their K-3 literacy programs, so we had a chance to look at those first. They then expanded it to K-5, and we reviewed all of them at one time. In December to January, VDOE has sent out their finalization, that was December of 2023, for the instructional program. Our committee identified two core programs, and those are literacy leaders that are on our Literacy Leadership Committee for K-5, since it was K5 literacy. When we came down to it, we identified two programs, as we mentioned before. It was Benchmark Advance and HMH Into Reading. And so the program selected moved forward. When we came to you, we introduced the HMH Into Reading series, as it was chosen overwhelmingly by our staff, a 33- to 36 vote. So I come to you today because we have concluded our 30-day window, and it's time for us to actually move forward with adopting the textbook, with your approval. So how do we do our public review? Just so that you know, the public review was put on our website. You have screenshots there. We also sent out through our parent square our public review. We did that twice, trying to drum up some information to let parents know how that they could review the material. The material was kept in the school board office. In addition to that, for some of our parents who have later hours, we had weekend hours at PCOS and Public Library, and it was available by appointment to come and check it out into a room. So just to review it one more time. When we looked at the different instructional programs that were out there, the ones that were released to be voted upon or to be chosen were Amplify Education, it's also known as CKLA, Benchmark Advance, HMH Into Reading, Imagine Learning, McGraw-Hill, Open Court, Open Up Resources, and Savas Learning Company. As we started to look through those, the four that made our initial selection were the Amplify CKLA, Benchmark, Into Reading, and Open Court. And that's how we narrowed down the process, as I mentioned before. So let's talk about HMH specifically. The program provides a strong foundation for reading skills and integrates comprehension, background knowledge, and writing instruction throughout separate modules, with a provided detailed scope and sequence for teachers to use. Students have opportunities to interact with vocabulary instruction, and they have multiple chances for writing applications across many different genres. The scope and sequence for phonics and phonological awareness instruction is easy for teachers to locate. In addition to the scope and sequence, there are many resources that enhance teacher understanding and actually go through it in depth with teachers. Content structured thematically by themes and topics through connected texts that support interactive discussion, they expand and they deepen some of our knowledge-building vocabulary and background knowledge. The program includes resources, again, that will assist our teachers, in different texts that include characters and settings with the appropriate concepts. Finally, it provides a wealth of, a bank of resources for novice and veteran teachers, such as literacy center guides, printable literacy center resources, and it also gives plenty of formative and summative assessments along the way, so that we can gauge student mastery. The VDOE has released in their approved curriculum guides, they went through each of the different curriculums that I mentioned before, I call it curriculum, but technically it's just the resource guide. So when they went into their resource guides, HMH, as it was scored kindergarten first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, it breaks it down, and all of the programs I've broken down, into phonological and phonemic awareness, phonics and word study, vocabulary, text reading and fluency, developing comprehension and background knowledge, small group instruction and independent practice and writing, with those being the key indicators that we are looking for. As you notice, for HMH, the two areas that are partial, it's either all elements are there, partial elements are there, or no elements are there, and any means it's not applicable. So there are three partials there for vocabulary, one at the kindergarten level, so of course that's something that we will enhance and support with additional vocabulary there. And you'll see text reading and fluency, and text reading and fluency at those levels is continuity, smoothness, how students are reading with expression, their rate, those different things. But I want you to see that other programs as well that were indicated, and they were rated and reviewed, there was no perfect end-all, so we had to see what our needs were and what best fit our needs. For Open Court, a lot of the areas that it was truly weak on K-3 was small group instruction and independent practice, and our group kind of took all of this into consideration for what we needed. Small group and independent practice is huge, especially for our needs right now for our students. CKLA over at the end, gonna have to look at my sheet, it's a little small. So these slides here show that CKLA was actually one of the ones that was missing a lot of foundational things, such as our vocabulary. It also rated a little bit lower in developing comprehension and background knowledge as we started to progress to fourth and fifth grade, and then that small and independent practice in reading, along with one text in reading fluency, I believe that was in second grade. And then finally, Benchmark Advance was the fourth one that we had considered, and they were missing some of the foundational things in kindergarten, phonological awareness, or phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, and then vocabulary building. And as we progressed a little farther, vocabulary in third grade. So just so that you can see VDOE, how everything breaks down there. So Into Reading. We also have for Into Reading, there are different types of scales you can use that break it down. So we have this one from our Ed Center. Ed Center breaks it down to the different expectations it has from K-6. So the two, when we broke down to the final two components, that was Benchmark, and it was HMH. So HMH here meets all expectations for K-6, and again, for usability, also meets expectations where it is scored. Benchmark Advance was the second. When we started to really delve into this, they met expectations for K-2, but when we got a little bit deeper on 3-6, it only partially met some of the literacy components that usually curriculums are judged for. So that is kind of where we are at today, and why we bring you this curriculum to vote on. So hopefully that'll answer a few things. But as we move forward, you'll hear a lot of talk about high-quality instructional materials. That's a new thing. VDOE, as we have done with our literacy text and VLA, VLA really kind of launched that mission to identify high-quality instructional materials, evidence-based practices, you know, science-based research, these different things that talk about the way we learn, the way students learn. So with that said, we just wrapped up for reading, and we are now right in the throes of math. So we will be pulling a team together to work on mathematics. In addition to that, we went K-5, because VDOE kind of has been walking through a little bit, building the plane as we go. And so they are going to be releasing our 6-8 supplementals, and that'll be something we will look for for 6-8 as well, to make sure that we have the resources that our students and our teachers need, that are going to align with what we're doing. One of those big topic areas, we'll talk more about at another meeting, will be writing. That's a big focus for us. For mathematics, just to give you a timeline breakdown, everything is compounding on top of each other. Typically, educators have the first year where they're looking through and the standards are released. Then there is a year where we have a crosswalk, where they show you what the changes are from the old standards to what the new standards are. Within that crosswalk year, it gives you time and your teachers to kind of train, learn, create your curriculum. They are starting to not do that anymore. Because there's this race right now to get all of our curriculum updated and resources, VDOE is spitting them out. So your timeline, looking at it up here, we have 24-25, this is for full implementation. And by full implementation, I mean that's when our students are going to be tested on their SOLs. 24-25, our students will be tested on English SOLs, so all the new standards go into play. In addition to that, remember how I told you currently we're in the middle of math? Our students are going to be tested on those math SOLs, which the state gave us three options. They were released earlier this year, we could, or over the summer, we could either not introduce them and wait, we could introduce some of them and still teach the old standards and the new standards, or we could jump straight ahead and only do new standards. We chose to jump straight ahead and do new standards, so our teachers would be trained, they would know it, and our students would kind of be ahead with meeting them, so providing those gaps. We will test on those next year. Social studies will be testing on standards in 2025-26, and in addition to that, science is going to test in 25-26 as well. What does that mean for you? It means that we'll be coming to you for money for textbooks, because just like we did with VLA, we cannot use a textbook that has not been vetted and selected by VDOE and their group. They do a great job of pulling educators from all across the state, and these are expert, master teachers and experts in the field, but again, it's that wait process. So when we come, it might be, oh my gosh, we really need to go ahead and get this resource now, because we have to move as fast as they do. And that is my presentation for you tonight. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you said 33 out of 36, or were you estimating?
It's 33 out of 36 who responded.
And those are the people that vetted the curriculum, the HMH and the reading?
So the way that it works out is we had a curriculum team of K5 literacy leaders. First of all, VDOE vetted all of them. So VDOE goes through the different benchmarks, and it is a thorough process. Then it comes to us. What we do is, we know the curriculum is good, it is aligned, it meets all the different standards, but we look through it because we know what our students need, and we can get a feel for the curriculum and what will work best for our kiddos. So then, as a literacy team, that's where we took, I think it was about eight or nine, and we narrowed it down to four, because it's overwhelming to send that many out to schools. We then had vendors come, and they went through the curriculum, they went through the online platforms, they went through the text. One good thing we're looking at is, it's really nice to have a textbook that has a lot of additional resources, especially for your newer teachers that are coming in, that is aligned, it's continuous, and it's also showing kind of that phonemic awareness that ties right in. And if it's missing something, we know what our strengths are. So, long story short, our literacy team then goes and has two that they vet, they send those out to schools. The schools receive a presentation, they go through it through their PLC meetings, some also went through it through their faculty, and at that point, after they go through, we ask them, what do you feel most comfortable with? What is it that you feel like our students need? Which one looks like a better resource for you? And then we have them vote on that, and that's where that number came from.
And another question. We said previously that we were going to start involving parents into the, you know, the curriculum, vetting and picking and all that stuff. Was that used this time?
So when it comes to textbooks, textbooks is not something for that type of instruction. It's a basal guide, and it's our basal textbook that we bring parents in for, because it is about curriculum alignment, it is based on what VDOE releases to us. So if it were something to be an additional type of resource, I imagine that we possibly would, but typically we'll bring parents in for other things that are committee-related, like our attendance committee, or our VTSS Positive Behavior Committee things coming in. But we really stick with the educators who have that foundation in the teaching.
Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
I got a question. Do you know if VDOE or the committee looked at implementation research or pilot studies of the curriculum to see if one had different results or better results than others?
So there have been a couple of studies that have come out. One of them, I know CKLA had a study that came out about the percentage of effectiveness that came about. In February, HMH, and I have a, actually have a copy that I will provide for you in the work session, but HMH has their copy, they just submitted February 2024, and the research that they did unfortunately was right at the start of COVID, so they redid it when it came, I believe, 2021 school year. The initial research showed that there were gains from the initial test, which was prior to COVID. They did the mid-year test, and in the mid-year test, there were significant gains, but then COVID hit, so they had to kind of stop because things went awry. They then picked it back up, and they looked at their significant, statistically significant results, that there are higher averages for especially students grades three and four. But I have a couple of research guides that we've been pulling for there too, just to see what the data says.
Some of the reviews I looked at, assuming that VDOE gave it high scores on writing, that that was a separate add-on, and they must be including that as part of the whole literature.
It's infused into, and that was one of the other things that we liked about this especially, is writing should never be separate. It should seamlessly kind of go into everything that we teach, and they did a great job of doing Writer's Workshop and those kind of writing conferences with them.
Just something quickly to add, that we often do is to look around with school systems that have larger staff, that have the capacity to do this vetting on a more detailed scale. And everybody's in the throes right now of having these very meetings to approve this curriculum, since it's hot off the press. We do know that this is the choice from Virginia Beach. We believe York is taking the same curriculum to their board, Washington, Chesterfield, there's quite a few school divisions that we've been able, who have already are at this stage of the process. So we feel like it's been well-vetted with folks that also have high-performing school divisions.
So math and English will be implemented in the next academic school. So you guys are vetting the curriculum, but then we still have to pick textbooks, correct?
Yes. This is, you know, I've been at this quite a few years. This is the first time I've ever seen four core curriculum areas to be constructed in four years. It's a very ambitious process. Typically, as Ms. Brown said, there's a year where the standards are released, and then the year, the following year, the standards are unpacked, curriculum is investigated, and then adopted. So there's, each curriculum cycle is typically two and sometimes three years, but we're doing four core curriculums in the state of Virginia in four years. Well, yes, in two years, but the VLA started a year earlier. We started this actually eight months ago, nine months ago. We got a jump start because of the Virginia Literacy Act with...
And I will just, oh, I'm sorry, just respond. Had an opportunity to talk to the HMH representatives. So so far, those that are looking at, the Deafness are Loudoun County, Virginia Beach, Prince William, Wise County, Washington County, Smith County, Wythe County, Albemarle just selected it, and I verified that Hampton is also going to be going with this as well.
Did you receive any concerns as a result of the 30-day review? I mean, I'm speaking as a school board member. I did not, but are there any things that were not brought to our attention that we need to be aware of? And I reviewed it as well, but...
So for the questions that we have, we had a little survey that was up there, and they could, based on the survey, give it excellent, or anywhere from, you know, needs improvement, and so it was rated all excellent. One comment that was written by one parent has said that I like the workbook includes actual books and illustrations created outside of the curriculum, real books that kids might actually read. So that was one of the positive ones. There was one comment about, I think it's the fourth-grade book, just that there was a reference of white skin, brown skin, but it was simply in a description of something of that, but nothing any deeper. But that's all we've had are glowing reviews, excellent for everything.
Last question. In regards to textbooks, when will we start looking at textbooks? Because math and English are...
If you approve it tonight.
Okay.
We really have a lot to do. We're going to be, you know, unpacking standards, we've got teams that are going to be working on this to make sure that we provide them the staff development, so that we're building really good, robust curriculum guides, but it takes people to do it, and it takes time. So we're going to get a jump start as soon as...
And let me just add to that piece. The ball starts rolling when the state releases the approved materials. They vet it first, and so it would be premature for us to have a team vetting something that... They all have textbooks, all these companies, but we don't know the ones that are cleared by VDOE that are married to the curriculum. So the standards come first, and once we receive those, we'll have our team ready to start the following day.
So we said that we're trying to use larger school systems to vet, because they have more resources, but from what I thought you heard is, they haven't approved yet, but we think they're going to approve.
No, Virginia Beach has approved, Hampton has approved, Loudoun County has approved. I know that we have a very close surrounding neighbor who has not gone to their board yet, but they are doing the 30-day process right now, so I don't want to speak on anyone who has not been approved. This is a list of people who have been approved.
Let me just add this piece, that's a disclaimer to that. I have recommending a curriculum package to a board that didn't support it. So we know that all of these schools are taking this package to their board, and again, unless something very strange happens, they'll all be approved.
And those circles that you showed for the rankings, was that done by our team, or was that done, where'd you get those rankings? Was that from VDOE?
Those are the VDOE, so when they pull everyone together from the state, and they look at it in all of their resource guides, and they have a statewide committee, they took months to go through. So for example, math is going on now. For geometry, Katie Johnson is our math coach here for PCOS, and she's actually on that team for the state. So they look and see the people who are exemplary in their field come together, and they're the ones that are going through looking for alignment, looking to see if it matches up to the research and brain research as well. Anything else? All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Dr. Ratliff, find operations update?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Martin, Mr. Tillet, and Board members. Tonight, I do have your operations update. We'll begin tonight and talk a little bit about the playground at the elementary school. Over the last several months, but really over the last several years, we've heard about a need to have another playground at the elementary school. As we've talked about this and tried to figure out ways that it may be possible to be able to accomplish that feat, we have identified one potential funding source, which we wanted to bring to you and kind of lay the dynamics out to that, to see if you'd like us to move forward with that. So in the 2002-2024 biennial budget, which was adopted on June 1st of '22, VDOE distributed school construction funds, excuse me, to school districts. We received about a million and a half dollars when those funds were dispersed. The capital projects that we have utilized that funding for was the roof at the primary school, and the portions of the HVAC project at the primary school, in which the city didn't fund. After all your invoices are in, your bills are paid, we have roughly about $155,000 We have roughly about $155,000 left of that a million and a half that was initially given to us. When you look at all of the capital needs that we have, and we do have numerous capital needs right now and substantial things that we need to have done. Nothing really comes down to the threshold that we could use this money to get an entire project done. So basically, we can't put a roof on the high school. We can't put an HVAC system in the high school with the amount of money that we have, really can't even touch it. We can, from the estimates that I got several months ago, potentially put a playground in. Now, this money did come with strings. It was a one-time funding that was given to the state and I honestly don't even remember the last time school construction funds were given to us from the state. They used to give literary loans probably 20 years ago and they quit doing that. So I don't know that we'll ever get that money again. Nonetheless, the restrictions that we had were school construction additions, infrastructure, site acquisition, renovations, technology expenditures related to modernizing classroom equipment, school safety equipment, school safety renovations, debt service payments on school projects. So as we were looking in the big picture of things that we needed to do, we wanted to do, and the community really wanted us to do, we thought that this may be a good route to go with the remaining money that we had from the Department of Education with the school construction funding. Next, you also have in your packet tonight an authorization for approval for the superintendent to sign the food services contract with Aramark for them to be our vendor again for this coming year. To remind you, during the 21-22 school year, a RFP was issued and Aramark won that bid. The RFP went into place, year one was the following school year. And you were up for, basically it was a five-year period. Each contract was on a one-year term. So it was the first year of the contract, then up to four renewals after that. This is the second renewal and the third total year of the contract before we would go back out to bid again for that. And the best I could tell, Aramark has been our food service provider for roughly about the last 13 years. I couldn't find the exact numbers, but based on what I have found over the last few years and when we put the RFP out, it looks like that's about where we were at. And finally, tonight I will be giving you all in the work session, a draft copy of the 24-25 calendar. Details regarding the calendar and the specifics will come at a work session prior to the March board meeting. That March board meeting is when we will actually present the calendar for approval. Essentially, the calendar is a result of input from administration, the regional calendar committee, teachers and parents. But again, we're going to give you much more details and much more depth about all the dynamics of the calendar. We did want to give you time to lay eyes on and look at and generate any questions that you may have prior to the meeting next month. Hiring, if the last month has been any indicator, hopefully we'll have a good hiring season. I just came back from ODU this last week. I did get 22 resumes. And just to put that in comparison, while that doesn't sound like that many, over the last several years, the most that I have come back with is eight. So hopefully that is indicative that we're going to see more people coming and looking for jobs. It may not be, we hope that it is. Right now, we're in the process of verifying anyone that said they're going to resign, anybody that's going to retire from the intent forms that we talked about, I believe it was last month. After we get those verifications, the jobs will be posted and we'll immediately begin hiring for those for next year. And finally, transportation. Couple of things I want to address with transportation. I'd like to thank first off airbus drivers for everything that they're doing right now. Our drivers are doubling runs, are taking student homes and no pun intended, they are literally going the extra mile to help out and get all kids delivered where they need to go. Principals, office staff, thank you all for what you're doing. Parents, we appreciate you being patient with us right now. If you look at our actual drop-off times, we've actually got things pretty close to what they normally are. But what we're experiencing right now is we currently have 16 full-time bus drivers actually hired on staff. Of that 16, we have five out on a long-term medical leave and one that's not trained. So out of our full-time drivers that we have on staff, that's 38% that we actually have off the road. So our drivers are really stretched thin right now in trying to get kids where they need to go. So again, thank, thank all you drivers for what you're doing, the principals, office staff members, parents for being patient, just everybody that's helping out with this. It's certainly not an ideal situation, but I do think all in all, our people are doing a really good job with what we have and getting everything, people where they need to go. If anyone is interested in applying, there is an application open on the webpage. You're welcome to do that and we can get you spoken with very quickly. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Excuse me, I have a question. So for the bus drivers, they have to have a CDL license, correct?
You have to have a CDL with a passenger endorsement. If you do not have that, we pay to train you to get that CDL with the endorsement. After you've gotten the CDL with the passenger endorsement, there is 10 hours of classroom time and 14 hours of behind-the-wheel time. So essentially, after we get the CDL with the passenger endorsement, you're looking at about roughly two weeks. We can kind of get it done. And again, all of the training, we train and we pay you while we train.
So with these intents that you said that we'd come in, what do the numbers kind of look like? Are they about the same as last year? Are they more, are they less?
Yeah, they're very similar to last year, actually a little less than last year, but a similar trend.
And they normally give you reasons of that, what is the trend?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do a report. Once we get all this calculated, we'll do a report, once it's finalized to the board like we did last year of, we'll give you that same sheet of exactly how many and what reasons were given for departure. I'm seeing quite a few retirees. We've got a few folks military transfer. We hired quite a few military connected instructors last year and the year before.
The exit survey comes when people actually leave. This is a form telling us I'm going to resign, I'm going to retire, I want to be in my same spot. Basically, it's very, very simplified.
So it gives us an idea of kind of what the feel is around the schools and what we're going to be looking in. That information would be good for us, especially with budget coming up to try figuring out what we need to do to retain staff.
Right.
A question on the playground budget line, right? So that money couldn't be, say, rolled over to buy down $150,000 of HVAC? It has to go towards a product that is exactly $5,000?
No, it could, if you chose to do it, it could be used to do that. The, I guess, the.
So I know how many strings, like how.
Not really a problem, but what you're looking at, when you look at what. And I don't know if you all even know, but the city went through and approved a very nice capital improvement plan that addressed a lot of the issues that we have over the next many years. HVAC in particular, it is, I think, one budget cycle away, but almost two years away as to when the actual install would be. So what you're doing is you're carrying that money from '22 forward all the way that far if you're going to do that. And you're looking at, I mean, all of this is a lot of money, obviously, but when you're looking at a $3 million job, then, you know, you're not looking at a substantial part of it. Whereas what we're looking at is we could go ahead and look at getting a piece that a lot of people are vested in within the community and is needed and really could be used in a more immediate thing within the schools.
And we don't have no time limit to spend that?
I do not, I'm going to tell you, I do not think we do. I'll have to verify that, but I'm just about certain in saying we do not have the time limit. Correct.
Any idea of like the size and scope you purchase with that? 150 versus like something ideal, like is it like middle of the road? Is it like grandiose?
I actually, I actually had a playground, I got a quote on one prior to this when it came up before. And for roughly $150,000, you can put a playground in that would hold about 40 kids and is roughly the size, the exact same size dimension-wise as the playground that you have in the front of the school. So essentially, you would kind of be doubling what you have. We would be looking more at the rear of the school. So you would have, and you know, you're looking at a playground that's specific for kids this age, but it would be roughly about the size of the playground that you have in the front of the school. And that is, that would be a, I guess, a turnkey job. I think the quote that I got was right at 150,000, give or take a little bit. And that was everything included within that.
This is third through fifth grade, which my kids are there through the fifth grade and all I hear is they play on the basketball court more than anyone else and they want to play with balls and kick around and run. So that's just trying to figure out if this might be better spent down the road or not and that's something we have to decide.
If we went this route, we would go, we would put it out to bid. We would go the RFP route, so to make sure.
That'd be two or three classrooms, 40 kids?
Basically, a class and a half would be. You could squeeze a lot of kids on there, but a class and a half is about the size that you're going to get comfortably on a playground that size.
Did we have a concern earlier this year about the playground at the elementary school? And Mr. Fai came and did a presentation, do you remember?
I mean, I have been a playground monitor at the elementary school. I mean, my personal opinion is it is in need of significant enhancement. My opinion would be in the back of the school, you still have access to the basketball courts and such. So I don't know that you would necessarily have to put, you know, only a class and a half on the playground. That may be all it draws anyway, if you have access to the basketball courts in the field. But I am quite obviously very much in favor of a playground at the elementary school.
I think we had some parents too that came in support of a playground or requesting playground equipment, I think. Just to remind us, I just want to validate that I remember remembering that correctly.
That would be my personal recollection and my personal experience just from PTO discussions and et cetera, but.
We've heard miscellaneous comments for years, but yes, Mr. Fai came sometime earlier this school year and did speak regarding his opinion, the need of having additional playground areas at the elementary school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Spence, financial update?
Good evening, Chair Martin, members of the school board, Mr. Tillot. For the finance report this evening, I wanted to provide an update on the budget process. Mr. Tillot will be presenting the proposed budget in more detail in the work session immediately following this meeting. This budget has been prepared based on the governor's budget. Pecosin City Public Schools is projected to receive $1,147,859 in additional state revenue based on an ADM of 2038. The governor has recommended a 1% bonus for SOQ-recognized instructional and support positions. In lieu of the bonus, the school's budget provides a 5% raise for all employees. The House and Senate released their budget proposals this last Sunday, February 18th. This chart shows primary differences between the House and Senate for education funding. It is noted that both chambers are recommending salary increases for each biennium year. Since FY25 begins a new biennium, the General Assembly is now in a long session, which will end around March 9th of this year. I wanted to point out other items to note, that there was $564,218 for operational requests for materials, supplies, equipment, software, professional development and other services from principals, directors and staff that have been honored in the superintendent's proposed budget. The health insurance and dental insurance renewal currently is negotiated at a 2% increase in premiums for FY25. Originally, we're anticipating 9%, but our financial advisors got it down to 2%. This does not require a change in the network for any of the plans and the insurance increase for the, in the superintendent's budget is approximately $44,192. The MetLife dental insurance renewal yielded a 7% increase for participating individuals and families. That equates to less than $3 a month for individual coverage and $8 a month for family coverage. This slide shows there is a 7.15% increase or $246,553 in the FY25 proposed budget as compared to the FY24 original budget. The budget distribution of the proposed budget of $30,687,710 is shown in this table, where 72% is allocable to instruction. I wanted to note that the salaries and benefits for all employees represents approximately 80% of the budget, excuse me. This table shows that revenue, total revenue is projected to increase, which includes federal, state and local, to $1,422,945 as well as projected expenditures to increase of $246,553. So this creates a projected deficit of $623,608. A request for this amount from the city of Pecosin is included in this budget in order to support basically the compensation increase for all employees. There will be a public hearing on the proposed budget at the regular meeting on Tuesday, March 19th at 6:00 p.m. And on April 27th, there'll be a joint school board and city council work session to discuss the board-approved budget. And in the work session, there'll be much more detail to these general increases and decreases for your review. It was requested that staff analyze the following initiatives to quantify implementation cost. One was payroll cost to adopt York County Public Schools teacher pay scale. Second was to conduct an audit of the school's supplement schedule to determine if adjustments are needed in order to be competitive with its neighboring school districts. And thirdly, calls for the schools to fund all AP tests for all enrolled students. The calls for these requests will be reviewed in the upcoming budget work session. The budget will be available, superintendent's proposed budget will be available for review tomorrow on the school's website and also in the Pecosin Public Library. As always, we appreciate the support of the city manager, the city council and the school board. And that concludes my report. Questions?
The $623,000, would that be the 4% and then the state gives us 1% or is that 5%?
That's 5%. We've, that is the roughly $100,000 for the 1% has been deducted from this.
So when we talked about this in the past, I think we said we were about 5.8% lower than Gloucester and were the lowest in the area, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll talk through all of those details in the work session. There's, we've got some, lots of data for you, so we can look at where we're ranking. What we heard from the board pretty clearly is we wanted to set our goal at York County, being our nearest competitor. And performance-wise and teacher recruiting-wise. And so we kind of set that as a benchmark. We do rank just behind Gloucester on the list of area school divisions. The large school divisions, of course, at the top of the list. And so we'll talk in detail about those numbers, where we start, where we end up, using York as kind of the benchmark. But the challenge is everybody's doing exactly what we're doing right now. So they're all looking at their next year's budget. All we have data of about is what is currently in place. So all the information we're going to give you, now we've read the tea leaves and communicated with other school divisions. We do know what York's proposal is going to be. We have an idea what other neighboring schools are going to be. So when we start the conversation tonight in the work session, we'll be looking at where we are now and where these, where we believe. where we are now and where these, where we believe these other folks are coming. It's always a challenge when the governor's budget doesn't have a raise, because we build our budget around the governor's budget, knowing that was going to be a 1% bonus, one-time bonus. We rolled that in. We have verified that we can count that money towards an annual, a reoccurring pay raise instead of a one-time bonus. So we've offset that 1% against this budget proposal. I hope that answered the question, but yeah, we don't know exactly where Gloucester is coming in. When, when we were having a conversation with all the area superintendents a month ago, most of the school divisions were, were planning to build budgets around 2% to 3.5% because that was the cost of living around that range, knowing that the, all we have was the governor's budget of the 1% bonus. So what we have learned is that York County is coming in at probably 5.5. So.
They were about 13.5 higher than?
Somewhere, yeah.
Now grow to now 14.5 higher than us.
So the, the conversation will be framed around, what do we do to stay where we are? And that's 5.5% to stay where we are.
And then, so, I think you said, was it $400,000 for technology up there on next year's budget? Or the ask for the, somewhere around there? So that $155,000 for the playground could be used to, for technology, I thought I saw on his, that would be able to shift more funds off of what we need to go toward teachers if we choose to do so?
Realize that there's a difference between capital and operational. So the, anything that you're looking at as one-time expenditures, you have to see it exclusively as a one-time expenditure. We're not going to buy another playground next year and the next year and the next year.
There'd be something next year.
Maybe.
Buses, I mean, we just keep adding in these capital purchases. And I, until this budget, I am going to ask that we hold off on capital purchase going into it till we figure out a good budget that we're happy with, or if everybody's happy, so that can come down the road.
If I could right now, with the technology, in the technology is not only that 400, that's also salaries in there, and there's operational costs that would not be eligible for the $155,000. But if we were to drill down, which we definitely could, I can't remember off the top of my head, we really have anything, that would really quantify as, that would be eligible for the school construction funding. There are definitely restrictions. You cannot use over salaries or operations.
But we were having our budget, some kind of expenditures that we spend good money on that could be used this way that we have spent.
And we're going, we're going to talk in great detail about what there is that we have flexibility to, to, you know, we can't not put gas in the buses and, you know, but we, we're going to provide very detailed information about what we have on the table that we can talk about cutting in order to do something else. But keep in mind that anything that's capital comes directly from the city. We don't receive capital money. So if you're planning to say, let's not buy a bus, that's a bus that the city is going to buy. We don't actually, we don't save that money because it doesn't come to us directly. It comes only from the city in those requests. And the city separates very distinctly operational versus capital. When they look at an operational request like we've asked for in this budget, that's a salary increase that will reoccur every year. A school bus is a one-time purchase, and they separate those completely. They don't even deal with those budgets the same way. For example, we were at the city's budget workshop last Monday, where they looked at their capital budget, and it's a pretty aggressive plan they have, extraordinary, actually. And we'll talk a little bit about that tonight, although our capital plan, as you'll recall, was already approved last year at their request. We've submitted that, that's, that is our request. They have already built their capital plan around it, and they're planning to approve it on the 28th. They had their workshop last Monday, and I think it's the 28th they're planning to approve their capital budget. And it includes currently the new HVAC system at the high school, which is, we're on the last seconds of our boiler and chiller system over there. And also two additional buses that have been on our capital plan for some time. You know, our capital is a five-year plan, so they look at it, what are they willing to or able to carve out in capital funds? And they're using a variety of funds to do that, some is debt service. So that's all in, in their plan that comes from our request, which we sent them in the spring.
This $155,000 could be used at some point. And so if we're going to vote on this before we discuss our budget in there, then we might end up losing something that we could use in there, and that's my concern.
Actually, maybe not, because if we don't spend this on a capital project, which is listed there, the, the city may very well expect us contribute that money toward other capital projects that they pay.
But if we're going to ask the city to help pay teacher salaries, we shouldn't be looking at spending their money so they don't ask for it back. We should probably be trying to work out what's smartest and how to do it, if that's the choice of the board. But that's just the only thing I'm concerned about.
I have a question. So last meeting, we were presented with a 12% increase for health insurance and now 2%. And is it the POS or the high deductible policy?
Both of them.
Both?
Both, yes. So they were to negotiate down to 2% with the Centera Health Plans. Yes.
Thank you for negotiating, Matt.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Firth, do we have public, public comment?
Yes, I have three speakers tonight.
Okay, great. I'll read our statement and then we'll begin. The Pecosin School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. School board meetings, school board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should address a matter related to Pecosin Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual-related, individual student-related matter, the disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium and to allow, to follow school board policy. Time allotted to speakers shall be three minutes.
Thank you. First, I have Roxanne Overby of 47 Woodland.
You guys have my packet that I had done. Okay, you got me. All right. Good evening, my name is Roxanne Overby. I have a student at Pecosin Primary School and Pecosin Elementary School. I have been a member of the PTO in our school system since 2019. I have worked closely with both current principals and staff over the years on many events involving both schools. I've experienced both schools inside and out and feel I have a unique perspective to provide to you this evening on two items I am advocating for. The need for outdoor space at both schools are imperative more than ever with our growing school. Pecosin Elementary is in desperate need of a new playground. The PES PTO brought this discussion up last year and looked into possibly funding or fundraising for a new playground, but ran short after researching the cost. It was stated that we would need $1,000 per student per square feet to adequately provide to a size area for play. This would range to be around $50,000 or more with our growing school. The playground is older than the actual school and parts of its students are not allowed to play on. For this, Ms. Grisco did purchase small equipment for students to use while at recess, and the PTO has organized recess monitor volunteers to come in and help with recess. However, these initiatives put into place, the students are still getting bored. Recession, while most of you know, is a time for physical activity, which has been scientifically proven to help with memory, attention, concentration, and behavioral issues. Being outdoors provides a much-needed break from the structure of a classroom and helps with social skills. This leads me into my second item for discussion, which is the ongoing fundraising for the Pecosin Primary School Pavilion. In your paperwork I provided is a timeline of the pavilion planning and fundraising. As you can see, this has been ongoing for almost two years. Ms. Kason and staff advise the PTO that they are in need of an outdoor area that provides us an outdoor classroom for students and a place for staff to utilize oil and brakes. The current small staff lounge does not have an appropriate room for the 70-plus staff it has now. The primary school is the smallest school building in our district and is not, has no covered area outside to take breaks. We have spoken to Dr. Ratcliffe on this matter and have spoken to the maintenance department to secure a spot for the new pavilion. We have also spoken to the city and received three bids that you have before you. These estimates have been approved with the city as far as using the current pavilion outline at PES and has a rendering, oh, for a rendering. The PTO has raised over $16,000 of the $30,000 that was requested from PPS. We ask tonight before voting on the remaining construction funds to please look into taking a small portion of those school construction funds to help build the pavilion. Helping two schools grow with our student body can only help our future here within Pecosin City Public Schools. I have also invited you to our, I have also invite you to our families upcoming bingo night, to speak to our staff, students, and parents on this topic, and of course, to play bingo. Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Dara Libby of 15 River Gate Drive.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Tillit. I'm Dara Libby. I am the K-5 literacy coach here in Pecosin, and I'm also a Pecosin resident. I was very excited for the opportunity to serve my Pecosin community when I took the position of K-5 literacy coach this year. I previously held this position in York County, where I realized my love for supporting teachers, as they do the hard work of supporting students. Teaching and learning are what I love most, and I'm so very happy to be here in Pecosin and be able to support our teachers and schools so we can have the greatest impact possible for our students. The Virginia's Literacy Act is more than just core curriculum adoption, and our work is just beginning. As soon as the Department of Ed put out the approved curriculum list, we worked to get samples, meet publishing companies, and work diligently to inform our literacy committee members of any updates. Every single teacher K-5 evaluated these programs and voted on what they thought would best fit the needs of our students. Hours were put into this evaluation with feedback from all grade levels, reading specialists, and central office staff. As you know, our recommendation was brought forth at last month's board meeting with a 30-day public viewing period. The reason why I'm here, speaking to you tonight, is out of concern that some of the board members expressed issues or questions at the very last hour of this approval process. Please do not misunderstand. I know it's your responsibility as the board to ask important questions, to field community concerns and relay those back to us. I would expect nothing less from you. My question is what that process should look like in a practical sense. I was surprised to hear of postings on social media by a school board member that seemed to intentionally cast doubts on our ability to choose a core curriculum program. Examples of the inter-reading curriculum were shared, highlighting a social-emotional component and seemingly questioning our true intentions. I ask you, what are the proper channels for board members to address concerns? And I ask because if board members had used these channels in this case, our instructional team would have been able to explain that what was posted on social media is not from the program that we reviewed and presented to you tonight. It's a different version of the program, one that we had never seen and one that was not approved by the VDOE. I would have assumed that there were protocols in place to avoid these misunderstandings. We want to do our jobs, and these social media posts have undermined the hard work that our teachers put forth. With teacher retention being discussed, trust is one of the issues that's brought up. We want our teachers to feel trusted and supported. I'm new here, but our literacy committee consists of longstanding, respected members of our schools and local community. We need to trust them as professionals who have been in this field for many years to do what's best for our students and our community. Right now, I'm afraid that the social media discussions don't reflect that trust. With so many changes coming down from the Department of Education, we need to know that we're supported, and future concerns and questions from the board will be communicated in a more productive way. Thank you.
Last, I have Sheri Dykstra of 20 Amis Road.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Tillit. First, I would like to take this time and thank Mr. Tillit and Mrs. Brown and whoever else was involved for offering the K-5 literacy curriculum to our families to review. Really appreciate that. There are school districts in our country and right here in our state who are trying to add unnecessary roles to our overwhelmed educators and expose our children to many topics that need to be discussed at home. Parents have every right to be a little apprehensive in regards to their child's education. Several parents, including myself, have been uncomfortable with how SEL would be taught in our schools because of how we see it is abused in other districts around the country. It was never my intention personally, I don't speak on behalf of anyone else, just me, to make the workday a very difficult one for teachers, but as a parent and a taxpayer, I also have the right to question what is being taught to our little ones in our public schools. Since I have been attending the meetings, I have noticed our school board is often not aware of what the instructional presentation will be until moments before the meeting begins. I would like to ask the board to consider changing the timing and give our board members more notice on what topic will be presented and give the board time to prepare for the meeting. Any material they need to look over before a vote should be given to them before the 72 hours. Our board members work, and they have children of their own, and they should never be rushed to make a vote when it comes to our children's education. Regarding the smartwatches, you all know, I'm going to make it short, I just feel like, why even vote last month? You know, you've got, it's so unpredictable with transportation. I'm not blaming anyone, bus drivers, I cheer you guys on, but somebody needs to come to the middle here for these parents that can afford the watch, let them have it on for the afternoon drive home. Big shout-out to Jennifer Bunting about all the classes. I had two kids participating, one in the stage band, one on the team. It was a really fun event. Thank you, Melissa Bunting, for letting that happen. Thank you all for your dedication and time to the faculty, staff, and students. In regards to the HMH, it looks like it, there is a rush, but I don't want you guys to be rushed. You guys take your time to look through it as well, because it seems like there's three other subjects that need to be looked into as well. Regarding the playground, I wasn't going to speak on this, but it just popped in my mind, the field of dreams, if you build it, it will come. If you build it, they will play on it. Come on, guys, let's build that playground. Stop making excuses, and let's just build it for these children, even my kids, my 19-year-old. I, I, you know, we've been politicking for this forever. Build the playground. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the speakers I have for this evening?
Thank you. Mr. Burbidge, consent agenda? Or, sorry, Dr. Burbidge, consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda will consist of five parts, approval of financial reports, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached request, approval of personnel action, approval of minutes for January's regular meeting and work session, approval to authorize the superintendent to sign a contract for food services to Aramark Educational Services LLC.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So with the minutes, and as it's the email, it seems like there was some stuff added to it, but it has been changed now that was not part of our discussion or policy when we went through and made it. And I just want to make sure how those get added in, and do we review those, or how does that, how did that happen before?
I can explain that. We had a work session and then a meeting afterwards, and we listed in the meeting minutes of the work session exactly what happened and what was discussed that didn't equate to what was actually voted on in the meeting. So we assumed there was an erroneous motion that was offered. So I called each board member the following day or the day after to clarify, what did you think you were voting on? And the consensus was that what was, what we actually listed. So we listed on the minutes parenthetically what we believed was the vote. But after speaking with at least one board member who was not, how do I say this, in line with the, what everybody else thought they were voting on, we decided it was better to scrap that and come back and issue another vote as an agenda item, just to clarify it. So that's what we did. We, we readjusted the minutes to say, even though we believe this is what the board thought they were voting on from following up with a clarification, since at least one and possibly two board members may not have remembered it that way, we decided to come back, revote on it, that's the cleanest way to do it. So we struck that parenthetical, this is what we believe to be, what the motion was meant, to make it a new clean motion tonight. was meant, to make it, uh, a new clean motion tonight. That's why we put it as Agenda 8C. So, you will actually revisit that vote and clarify. If we missed it, we missed it. We went back and watched the, all of the minutes from the work session, and it clearly was a, um, a motion that contained more elements than how the motion was presented. Hope that explains it.
You said during the work session?
Yes, we went back and watched the work session minutes, uh, what the conversation looked like, and those minutes reflected what we actually thought the vote was. Then when we looked back at the minutes of the meeting, the vote was, did not include the second sentence of what we thought was the proposal, to have the, the watches powered off in book bags at school and on the bus. And that was the clarification I got from most of the board, uh, in the phone call. That's why we listed it parenthetically to match what the conversation in the work session. As it turns out, since it wasn't unanimous that every board member, um, agreed with that, we decided to put it back on the agenda to clarify that tonight.
Because the reading file didn't say anything about it being turned off.
The discussion part of it, that was in our book, it did not say anything about turned off too. That's why I just.
That's why it's on the agenda again tonight for you to clarify that.
So, right now, the policy stands that it's in the backpack, and it can stay on, and today you're going to have a new one that's going to say, to try and change in that to turn it off in the backpack.
What the code of conduct in the morning will reflect what the board decides tonight.
Oh, but it didn't last time.
We did a vote already, so now we just have to vote to change that vote.
Yep. Again, again, um, I think you're going to hear from the whole board tonight that what the majority of the board thought they were voting on was for the back, the smartwatches to be powered off and in book bags. If that's not the case, we'll, we'll know that tonight, and we will change that tomorrow morning.
I'm just confused, because like you said, the discussion, which I'm looking at from last one, does not say anything about that. So, we voted on that, but now we're going to say it was a misunderstanding, so even though we voted, when, that's not in there right now, and we're going to change it today? Or is it there, and we have to vote to change it? I think we have to vote to change it, because we voted on what the discussion was, which I'm looking at last discussion, and it just says, "In the backpack would not be allowed out on school grounds or on the school bus," is what in the board packet from last month says 100%. And in discussions, I said where, someone said turn them off, and I think when we started getting that kind of, oh, well, it's discussed this way without anybody voting to say, yes, I agree with you, and this is what we're going to do, it's a very slippery slope to say that we added something, but hold on, we're not going to do it, because we don't know if we really added it. And to do it, the vote was from the discussion that, like I said, is in the board packet that everybody voted on, so, in my opinion, and I might be wrong, is we have to put a vote to change what we already voted on to say, now we want it off.
The, whatever you decide in a motion tonight is the definitive answer. It's going to be scripted, word for word. That's what will go in the code of conduct. Whatever you all decide tonight will be the rule, um, that you all voted on. Again, we heard very deep conversation in that work session for about an hour about, um, the reasons for the, the, the watches to be powered off and in book bags. That was the, the conversation with no exception in that meeting. We watched it multiple times to clarify that. So, we assumed naturally that in the meeting that followed a few minutes later, the motion missed that last statement. If that was not the intent of the board, we'll know that in a few minutes. So, whatever the board decides tonight is by motion, second, discussion, and vote will be the answer, and that will reflect that word for word tomorrow morning in the code of conduct.
So, but by law, with that last motion, what is that, just a scrapped motion? I'm confused by that. Then that's what it's kind of in the ground that we all.
That motion was voted on. Uh, I think you're going to find from your board members tonight that, um, most of the board members believe that motion was not complete. If, if that's incorrect, if we misunderstood that, then we'll know that tonight. And whatever is approved will be the motion seconded and approved. That is not uncommon for, um, motions to be confused and sometimes have to be clarified. It happens often. Watch, watch C-SPAN.
We have a motion in our area, though, and now we have to change the motion or clarify the motion is what our vote's going to be is to.
We don't, we don't have a motion at the moment.
No, from last meeting, we had a motion to vote.
Right, but before we, right, so, the, what's on the table now is to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
So, we're, we're.
And the consent agenda is.
The consent agenda has the minutes.
The reading document that has, so what's in the reading document about the electronic devices?
From last, from last, and that's, those are corrected.
Once we, once we.
What does the minute say is my question. So, let me go through and find the minutes of the electronic documents, because now we're approving.
We're not, we're not changing.
Yeah, we're not, unless there's a change to the minutes.
The minutes, it should be the minutes.
Are you asking, unless there's an amendment to the, unless you're trying to change the minutes?
Oh, well, I don't know if we'll vote for this minutes, because the minutes might not be on right. That's what we're trying to figure out, how the minutes are right, if we still don't understand what happened with the motion. The motion's in the minutes. So, we're voting that these minutes are correct, but we don't know what motion was done or where we're at.
The, the minutes, uh, that you have in your packet tonight in the consent agenda from last month's meeting are exactly right. Um, April, you can weigh in here, went back and watched the video of the minutes, and they are what's in your packet as, as corrected by April are correct from last month.
So, right now, we are going to approve that we made a motion, seconded by Ms. Childress, that the consideration for provision in the students' PPS and PES to carry smartwatches in their backpacks during school activities function hours be approved. And that was done last one.
That's correct.
So, we are going to, in our minutes, say that that's what was approved.
Absolutely.
So, then we are going to have to take a motion to change that if we're going to go the other way. And I just want to make sure that I'm clarifying that. It's not going to say, we do discussions, we have to make a motion at that point to say, we want this change to be turned off.
And it's item C on.
Yeah, and that's actually.
No, it's item C on.
Yeah, but if we approve the minutes, we have to realize that we're approving the minutes for it to be the way it is now, where it can be on.
That's why I said clarification on.
And then the next one, we're going to have to say, okay, we're going to try changing it. I just want to make sure that that's what we're doing, because it's not a clarification, it's a change, because once we approve these minutes, we're approving what it says here.
Okay.
And that concerns me. Board members don't know what they're voting on? That's, that's very concerning right there.
So, so we got a motion and a second, so we're still doing the discussion now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion related to the consent agenda? Ms. Firth, will you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 7-0.
Thank you. Uh, now for other matters. We have consideration of approval for the, of the proclamation for the National School Breakfast Week and Career and Technical Education Month. It was in your packet. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Firth, will you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 7-0.
Thank you. Consideration of the approval of the K-5 literacy curriculum adoption. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I do have one question, though. How much is this going to cost the school? I asked that earlier.
This was, if you recall, we had this in our carryover funding request, uh, for the city, so it's already allocated from actual savings from last year's budget. I don't remember the number. Do you remember off the top of your?
Like 150,000 or something like that?
Um, quite a bit. So, looking at the items going through, it's probably going to be somewhere around 250,000.
Do we have the cost of the other ones?
Did you say 251?
Sir?
Are the other ones similar? The other two that we looked at, is in cost-wise, are they similar?
I have not priced those out. I usually, we look generally for those other things, but we wait until everything is approved, and then we spend our time focusing on the cost for them.
And, and generally, they are. It's almost, they, they, they're competitors, and, um, what happens is there's a insignificant difference between cost of textbooks typically.
I, I just wanted to make a couple points, um, with, with the process. So, I know, you know, we had put it out for 30 days, and until we had our kind of meeting minutes, we didn't really know who was to be considered. So, I, I know I brought up a couple points with one of the comp competitors of just experience I had, right? I knew that they had a strong research history as far as their production of results, and I had two kids go through that certain curriculum when they were in private schools. I knew it was, um, you know, that it was a strong curriculum. So, I was like, ah, why didn't we consider that one? Didn't know until tonight about the whole process, so your presentation addressed a lot of those, you know, issues with me to say, oh, you know, why didn't they, why did select this one over that one? They're all good ones vetted by the state, so, you know, democratic process. I might have been one of the three of the 33 in the meeting, but 33 people outrule me. I'm going to say it. Hopefully, they're, it's, it's a good curriculum, so just wanted to make those statements.
And the only concern that I have, to finish the statement that you were reading about the COVID-19 pandemic, um, as a result, the research team was not able to determine how student performance would have changed over the course of the whole school year. That's pretty much the only concern that I have. And I saw where one school division, um, I'm sure we're going to be using their contract pricing for Prince William County. They've used it since 2021, and it looks like that their scores decrease one point. I don't know if that's significant or not, but it's a decrease. That's pretty much the concern I have. And thank you to the, uh, to the committee for, uh, going through the process.
Any other discussion? Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 7-0.
Thank you. We have a consideration of a clarification of approval for amendment of student code of conduct for electronic devices at PPS and PES. Is there a motion to clarify?
So, that motion to clarify, what is a motion to clarify? That's, that's where you're going to get sticky with this. It needs to be a motion to change the policy that we have to have in devices turned off. It's, it's going to be, y'all have to put the motion out to make sure it's clarified.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to table. No one spoke up.
I make a substitute motion. Make a substitute motion that students at PCOS and Elementary School may not bring cellular phones to school, mobile connected devices, with the exception of smartwatch. Must be kept turned off and in a backpack while on school grounds or on a school bus.
Is there a second?
I was the last part, Chris. Second sent, which must be turned off and in a backpack while on school grounds or on a school bus.
Okay, discussion?
And now I have a question. So, the difference in powered off versus a do not disturb mode? I mean, I, my bigger concern is do not disturb. It can't be vibrating, it can't be beeping, it can't be distracting. So, I would presume all of these devices would have some form of do not disturb mode if not parental settings for a school mode, which I know a lot of kid watches have. But again, we weren't going the route of specifying what type of smartwatch is allowed. So, does that help address the concerns if it is not necessarily powered off but in the backpack during school hours in a, I don't know if do not disturb mode is the proper term or not, but.
Yeah, school hours.
During school hours.
Well, that's what it's called.
Okay, there you go.
I feel when I was in school with my alarm, if I set my timer for every five minutes and my watch alarmed every five minutes, a teacher can handle that. Hey, you're making noise, you're distracting, let's stop that. If I had a pen and I just kept clicking it, hey, you're making noise, you distracted. Us diving in and trying to get so in-depth to try to figure out how to do it, all it does is take someone to say, hey, don't let that happen again, or don't do that. So, we can say, should not be making noise, should not be a distraction in the class, and the teachers can handle that at that point, because there's 100,000 things that can be a distraction in class. And how far do we want to go to start getting every single thing out of that class and make policies on every single little thing that could distract at some point? It just is a endless road that we're going down to make it where teachers know how to keep kids from distracting each other with stuff.
The power off is the, the bigger concern with the power off is on the bus where this, that's where the parents need to track. We don't have the trackers on the bus. As far as like some school districts, you can know where your bus is, how close it's coming to your house. Um, and it loses that function if it's off. Apple thing, I guess.
Air tag.
Air tag or something. But I mean, I, you know, it's, but that's, that's the one thing where you lose your, your issue, where you get dropped off in the wrong place, or, you know, you, you're on the, the bus forgets to drop you off, and, you know, you gotta, you're a kid that's literally, I'm not allowed to turn this off, you know, they.
Do we want a kid pulling it out on, in classroom to turn it on right before they got on the bus? I mean, we're just. Getting into the point of.
It's minutia.
Being silent in the backpack is, what's the difference? They're doing it now, and we're just trying to get far into it, but we can take the boat. I'm okay with it.
So, the one thing I'd like to add is, um, when they're silent, um, if they go off for beep or buzz or whatever, uh, say for instance, they're doing standardized testing, the teachers have to note any kind of beeps or non-representative conditions that happen during the class. Uh, on the bus, it's creating some safety issues. Kids trying to, you know, look at their smartwatches, and other kids jumping out of seats to go over and see the smartwatches. It's, it's a new thing, and.
Newport News doing. That's allowing even phones in these schools, so they.
We don't allow phones.
I'm saying Newport News does. In York County, it's, well, they want them to that.
But the bus issue specifically because of safety concerns, and the bus driver, they don't, they need to work on driving the bus, not.
We beat this down with a stick. We can go with the, but.
I mean, if we have it turned off in the backpack, is, is, there's no sense in it being brought to school at that point, the purpose of, you know, what, uh, parents wanted to accomplish to be able to track their kid, and also, you know, it, it, it being on silent or do not disturb, you know, it, it doesn't disturb the class.
What is the high school doing now with phones if they're going off in class?
They're supposed to be powered off and, um, not available for student use during class.
On the school grounds, but I see videos of people fighting in the bathroom with every single kid with their phone in there, taking pictures. I mean.
Again, another enforcement issue. These phones are a, an issue. Um, they're an issue all over. There's actually a bill in the General Assembly right now to ban them in the state. So, um, the, the movement is heading in the other direction, uh, away from electronic devices, personal-owned electronic devices in schools, for all of the disruptive and very dangerous things that actually happen with these, bullying, and the list goes on and on. So, um, and again, I'm just weighing in to, to, to read the tea leaves with you, that the trend is heading in the opposite direction. We have a, um, and you can consult the, the folks who enforce this every day. It's a challenge on the secondary level, policing the use of cell phones, uh, because they can have them on their person. Uh, they're supposed to be silent, powered off, not in use, um, except during certain times during the day when they have free, free time. Um, and they are older children. Um, the, the, uh, when we asked, we polled our teachers from primary and elementary school, and this came up in the work session, we talked about it, um, they saw this as a, a, a very real possible distraction and another level of things to have to, to enforce. But then that was part of the discussion, and, um, um, that I, this is the first I've heard about silenced, so I don't know how you all want to move forward with that discussion, but there is a motion and a second on the table. So I don't know how you all want to move forward with that discussion, but there is a motion and a second on the table.
So any more discussion on the proposed substitute motion? Then we vote, then we go back to the other motion. Right?
And to clarify, if we do not pass the substitute motion, we go back to the language from the minutes that were just approved. That is essentially silent on powered off versus.
That motion, they're available for use at, during the day. That motion, if you reread the motion.
They have to stay in the backpack. I think the motion says in the backpack, at school and on the bus.
Would you please reread the motion, the rule, the current rule, please?
The motion that was made at the January meeting was students at PPS and PES to carry a smartwatch in their backpack during school activities, functions, and hours be approved.
So should there be another, should we revisit what we're saying?
I thought we said on the bus on that motion. Did we not say on the bus on that motion? It was supposed to be, I thought we said in schools and on the bus.
Thus the question. What was read, we watched it over and over again. What was read is verbatim, the motion that was made, seconded, and voted on. And again, at least five members of the board, four members of the board remembered the conversation and thought they were voting, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, that they would be powered off and in book bags during school hours and the school bus. If that's not the case, this is the time to resolve that because that is the question. The motion, we believed not by on purpose, but by accident, left off the powered off and in book bags piece.
So I make a substitute motion to strike powered off and insert powered on and be silent.
How about just be silent or put in the.
Powered on, well, we specifically need powered on.
Silent mode or something?
PPS and PES to carry smartwatches in their backpack during school activities, functions, and hours. So the school function would still be bus rides home, would it not? School activities is a bus ride?
I would just recommend, I mean, you can say that, but I would recommend that you clarify because part of the concern, again, watching the, your work session was bus activity. And this is a concern. Our bus drivers have to drive. They can't police the back of the bus.
In the backpack. That's why I think we said school function and school hours. Because I think it's still, still school hours until you're off the bus. Because if something happens on the bus, it happened, if a fight breaks out on the bus, you can suspend people because it's on the bus.
Again, I would just recommend that you clarify the bus. I just think.
That's fine.
All right, so I would like to make an amendment. Strike powered off, insert powered on and in silent mode.
In the classroom and on the bus.
Well, yeah, whatever you said after that, I'm just striking powered on.
Is there a second?
Before we do that.
Sorry, reread that.
I'm sorry to be diplomatic. I need an actual, I need an actual statement of that we will be copying down verbatim to prevent us from going through this again.
Dr. Burbage, would you restate, please?
All right. Students at Pecoson Elementary, hold on before I get yelled at. Students at Pecoson Elementary School and Pecoson Primary School may not bring cellular phones to school or mobile connected devices with the exception of smartwatches, which must be.
Powered on and in silent, in silent mode.
Powered on and in silent mode.
If we say powered on, it has to be powered on. They can't have it powered off. So just say in silent mode.
Well, I mean, we're having to clarify this.
In silent mode is on.
Right, in silent mode.
Can it? Well, can be powered on in silent mode. How's that? Can be powered on in silent mode.
Which can be powered on and in silent mode and in a backpack while on school grounds or on school bus.
I'll second that one.
Okay, I was about to say can. You can't say can.
You said that off, that, I'm sorry.
Needs to be must.
Shall be, shall be, not must because then we're.
Shall be in back.
In silent mode, in the backpack, at school, or on the bus.
Somebody needs to be writing down these. I'm typing it up so we can just keep that in.
April, I hate to ask you, will you read what you have in the minutes?
So why don't we just go off the motion that we had before? And then we can say the provision for students at PPS or PES to carry smartwatches in their backpack if powered on, in silent mode, during school activities, on the bus, function, during school activities, functions, and hours or on the bus. And then now we'll sit there now has it in what we have and all we're adding backpack if on, in silent mode, comma, during school activities, functions, hours, or on the bus, and on the bus be approved.
Say that slowly because Mike's typing it out.
Okay, let's type it out. So for students at PPS and PES to carry a smartwatch in their backpack, comma, which can be powered on as long as it's on silent mode, comma, during school activities, functions, hours, and on the bus.
My substitute.
Now wait, let's look at it in writing before we start. Let him look at it just to make sure that we're where we're supposed to be at.
Okay.
So once it's typed out, you can decide to take your back and do what's written out so we have it written out so we can have it in writing.
If I can make one suggestion to just put turned off or in silent mode? Because it's simplified.
Powered off or in silent mode while on school grounds, school activities, at school activities or on the school bus, on a school bus. Cleaner way to say it. And I think that captures everything that.
Well, my thing for school activities though.
Okay. Students at PES and PPS may not bring cellular phones or to school or mobile connected devices with the exception of smartwatches, which must be kept in the backpack. Smartwatches that are in the backpack shall be in silent mode or turned off while on school grounds, school activities, or the school bus.
Now, I know where CJ's going with this, Mr. Childress, excuse me. You're talking about school activities. What if they're at a ballgame?
They have a high school basketball game and they're in elementary school. That's a school activity. I mean, that's just where.
And I hear you and for my, and I'm just weighing in for my personal belief. I'm not sure that's a problem for us. I don't want to speak for every school administrator, but if we're having a function at school, open house, what have you, I'm not sure it creates an instructional issue for us or supervision issue for us. So.
He's instructional and just.
Yeah, so I think you could say at school or on the bus. And that's, I think that captures it. And I think our people can enforce that.
What about field trips?
That's a good question.
During school hours. If you're having a field trip after school hours, I want my kid to be wearing a watch. If you're taking them on a weekend in elementary school and primary, which I don't do anyway, that should be there. But during school hours, I can hit saying school hours is a field trip on school hours.
CJ, what I said is school activities during school hours or the school bus.
Does that capture it? Is anybody good with that? Make your motion.
You.
All right. I make a motion to withdraw my substitute motion.
I second it.
We have to have another substitute motion though.
Now, he's gonna have to make a motion.
Mike, Mike has to make a substitute motion and read the new motion.
Do I have to?
Well, somebody has to.
Yeah, and anybody can do that.
You can withdraw it and read, like you can withdraw your original.
Be that for him. Everybody withdraws everything and start from scratch.
So Jonathan, if you withdraw your motion to table.
I withdraw my motion to table.
I move to amend the smartwatch policy to read as follows. Students at PES and PPS may not bring cellular phones or to school or mobile connected devices with the exception of smartwatches, which must be kept in the backpack. Smartwatches that are in the backpack shall be in silent mode or turned off while on school grounds, school activities during school hours, or the school bus.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just to clarify, there won't be any miscommunication with this.
This clears a bill, but I think you can. Tell from tonight why there was confusion.
So it said school grounds during school hours.
Yes, that's what this is.
So they can either have it turned off or turned on in silent mode and they won't get in trouble, obviously in their backpack.
Ms. Firth, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is seven zero.
Thank you.
Consider, last is the consideration of approval to utilize approximately $155,000 remaining in school construction funds issued pursuant to the 2224 biennial budget from VDOE for the purchase and installation of a playground at Pecoson Elementary School.
Can I motion to table this?
You can motion anything, Mr. Childress.
I'm motioning to table this to after the budget conversation just to see if there's any flexibility, if we need to move, what we can use it for and where we should use it for.
Is there a second?
Second.
Also in light of the pavilion, I don't know if there's flexibility.
Discussion.
Discussion like that. So I would want to table it as well.
Is maybe there's a way to pull out the money to do the pavilion and the playground?
Fair enough.
Any other discussion?
Because where would the pavilion be?
At the primary school.
Primary school.
Yeah.
And where exactly would it be though? She's still here.
Ms. Overby, could you clarify?
In the back, where it is dated, Pecoson area by one of the playgrounds. It's actually where the old HVAC system was. And we've already measured it out. So it'll fit perfectly there. It's the same size as the one at Pecoson Elementary School. It'll fit there.
Thank you.
And can I just ask too, we're talking about not necessarily tabling for the entire budget process, just maybe work session discussions. I mean, not months and months, but.
I thought the watch was gonna be fast, but I mean, you can always bring it back up anytime you want. It's just, you gotta get it back on.
Budget votes next month.
Next month, it has to be done by budget. So I mean, we're gonna have some tight timeframe to figure things out.
Okay.
And so do we have any concept drawings or any type of options that y'all have looked at? No, for the playground.
Dr. Ratliff, are there any, I think he said he had a rendering from before for the playground, potential playgrounds. I think.
We have a playground, this pavilion, we don't.
So the playgrounds, can we send that out too, just so we can see the rendering of what we're getting for the money?
Well, I think there might, that, well, no, that might be up for consideration. So I don't, that might be premature. You know, I think we should settle out for the budget, talk about if we're gonna spread out the money and then go back to the table with the total amount. So if it's $155,000, then we have it. But if it's not, then it may be something totally different. So probably best to just leave it until we come back to it. Ms. Firth, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
The motion is to, the motion is to table.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Communications and or other matters by the school board and superintendent. We'll start with you Thatcher.
As usual, we'll be starting with the primary school. PPS has been very busy in recent weeks and we have done our fair share of celebrating. We celebrated Valentine's Day and Kindness Week, dressing up in Spirit Day outfits and spreading kindness like confetti. We want to thank our PPS PTO for helping to distribute candy grams with the help of Betty the Bear on Valentine's Day. Every student and staff member got at least one additional treat that day. We have also studied about several famous Americans who are connected to holidays and celebrations this month such as President's Day and Black History Month. PPS second graders who also worked hard to raise money for the American Heart Association. This month, Ms. Dever coordinated two events for this. On February 8th, the annual second grade senior social night took place. It was fabulous to see so many of our extended family members and even neighbors participating in a multi-generational night of fun. The next day, our second graders put all their hard work on jump rope skills test as they participated in the heart challenge, what many know as the jump rope for heart. Students sustained jump roping and we had many parents there to help turn long jump ropes and assist with helicopter jumping. In all, PPS students raised over $8,700 for the American Heart Association. This is the highest amount fundraised by PPS for the American Heart Association in PPS history. Kudos to Ms. Dever and our second graders for this great achievement. This month, we will continue to gather for events that show our spirit and support our learning. Please join us for a PPS PTO sponsored Panda Express Spirit Night on February 27th and a Family Bingo Night and Silent Auction on February 29th. We will also have a Mad Science Assembly for all students on February 27th called Sounds Like Science, where kids will get tuned into learning with exciting demonstrations focused on sound, including the singing pipe, the surprisingly loud dinosaur in a can, and a kid created thunderstorm. We also can't wait to see what leap day activities our teachers have planned. The start of March rules with our Read Across America Week. PPS has scheduled our Spring Book Fair to coincide with this, which is March 4th through the 8th. Students and staff will have another Dress Up Spirit Week and on Thursday, March 7th, there will be a family night at our book fair. That evening, Ms. Parker, our art teacher, will also display first grade artwork in our hallways. This week will culminate with our annual Real Men Read Day where we are looking for men of all ages in our community to come and read to our students. No experience is necessary. You may bring your favorite book or we will supply one for you. Please read out to Ms. Kason. If you are interested in, and she will direct you to the event coordinator, please come and join us. Now for the elementary school, Pecoson Elementary School celebrated Kindness Week, Kindness Week last week with a Spear Week and classroom celebrations. Our Battle of the Books teams competed in our school level competition ending with two teams tied for representing Pecoson Elementary at the regional competition in Williamsburg. Our all-in after-school tutoring program is underway and select third, fourth, and fifth graders are spending time with reading and math in addition to their reading and math intervention provided during the school day. We are grateful for the teachers who have agreed to tutor with our all-in after-school program. Our staff spent time learning from each other during our mid-year Spark PD. PES teachers and division staff shared information on using Generation Genius Mastery Connect, useful tips for enhancing parent score communication, adult response to behavior strategies, small group reading instruction, writing in connection to content areas, and more. Our staff members are always learning and appreciate the time to enhance their craft. We are pleased to welcome our school's security officer, Mr. Scott Johnson. Mr. Johnson is beginning to learn students' names, being in our cafeteria for lunches and is learning the layout of the building. We are grateful for Mr. Johnson, our new SSO, working alongside our SRO Officer Curry as they both work to keep us all safe. We would also like to say thank you to our school counselor, Ms. Katie Chapman, as school counselor appreciation was earlier this month. PES fifth graders are beginning steps towards sixth grade transition as counselors have worked with fifth grade teachers on class selections and Rising Sixth Grade Parent Information Night is tomorrow, February 21st at 6:00 PM in the PMS auditorium. Thank you for your continued support of Pecoson Elementary School. Now for the middle school report. Students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade this year are taking their student growth assessments for reading. PMS celebrated National Kindness Week from February 12th through 16th. Students helped build our Tree of Kindness along the wall outside of the auditorium by decorating hearts with thoughtful messages, examples of kind acts, and reasons why it is important to show generosity towards others. Our school counselors made videos to share with all students at the start of each day. These engaging videos included interviews with Ms. Clark, Mr. Naylor, Officer Gills, and our very own Mr. Tillot. Battle of classes was also in full force last week. Students participated in theme days, competed in minute-to-win at games at lunch, had coin wars, and ultimately battled it out in the gym. Thursday evening, sportsmanship among teams was fantastic as they performed in front of a packed gym filled with family members, students, and staff. Cameron Monfields led us off with an amazing national anthem and Mr. Lawson, and forty members of the PMS pep band provided top-notch quality performances throughout the competition. Congratulations to our eighth graders on winning the coveted trophy. A huge thank you is extended to all who will make this memorable, this memorable, this event memorable as possible. We are also currently busy planning for next year. PMS school counselors are hosting parent information nights tomorrow evening. nights tomorrow evening and will then present classroom lessons to review registration information from the student perspective over the next two weeks. Finally, PMS would like to extend our congratulations to our 33 students that were inducted into National Junior Honor Society, our five students that were selected for all Virginia Choir and to our February Golden Bull Student of the Month, our Jack Swizer for sixth grade, Kai Barnes in seventh grade, and Kinsey Johnson in eighth grade. Now for the high school report. We had 25 students making all district choir and 22 participated. We also had 15 students audition for all state choir and had three delegates selected and one alternate as stated previously in the meeting, Maran Lund, Zana Williams, Abigail Smith, and the alternate Ava Gorman. Show choir season will begin in March. Please check the island times for income, upcoming show dates. As well as congratulations to the following PHS Islander Band students who were selected by audition for the Virginia Bannon Orchestra Directors Association District Eight All District Band. They performed with all district band on February 3rd, including symphonic band members Louis Martin, Sam Nelson, Avery Peschanoff, and concert band members Christopher Hicks, Victor Mbassiani, Charlotte Jensen, Ethan Jordan, and Jack Sebring. Congratulations to our indoor track team, boys and girls, placing third in the region with multiple region champions. The statement will be on February 28th and 29th. Good luck to our multiple student athletes. Congratulations to our girls and boys swim teams as they both placed third in our region meet. Our boys went on to take second place at states and our girls placed seventh overall. We did have Tony DeVries and our boys' 400-meter relay win state championships. Congratulations to our state wrestling program for winning the region championship and advancing 11 wrestlers to the state championship. Our wrestlers took second place overall at states and we had three champions, including Brian Latta, Reed Booth, and Jared Goodson. Congratulations to our Physical Elastic Bowl team who won the region tournament and will be competing for the state championship this weekend at Jamestown High School. Please wish our girls' basketball team good luck as they might still be playing tonight as we host the first round of region playoff versus Amelia High School. Our drama department is working hard on casting for our spring production, which will be Mamma Mia. Scheduling is underway for PHS for next year's classes, so students will be on the lookout for their appointment times. Thank you to our PTO as they host for, ooh, at our school to show our teachers their support. The vendor slash yard sale fair recently was awesome and was greatly appreciated. We would like to say a special thank you to our SRO, Mr. Biggs, and SSO Dale Simmons to recognize their contributions for their safety of our school. The past week was SRO Appreciation Week and I know everyone at Pecoson High School appreciates all that they do. SWS will begin in March, so please be on the lookout within the island times for the testing schedules and keep up with the island times in general. I know tryouts are underway for many spring sports, including boys soccer, um, boys soccer, baseball, and softball. And upcoming is girls soccer, which is later this week. And I know spring track is underway as soon as they are done with their state competitions. Thank you.
Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Jones for being Senior of the Month. I want to congratulate the, all the participants in the all state choir for PHS and PMS. And wanna give a shout out to the PHS Wrestling, their state runner-up. And also want to thank the school bus drivers that, you know, have to carry the kids to and from school each day, but also the long arduous trips that they have to go on for the sports events. And want to thank the speakers.
Dr. Goodell?
Just echo that. Congratulations to Ms. Jones and the choir and all the winter athletes. And just the, kind of a sad note in memoriam, a mentor of mine, Dr. Bill Owings, passed away this past week. He's a 50-year educator. He was a teacher, ACC Mac Superintendent. He was a professor at OU for over 20 years. So he sat on our dissertation chair. He's a world expert in school finance. And lately, he has been my sounding board as a, to deal with school board craziness because he was a superintendent. So I was like, you know, we'd have a weekly chat on, you know, the politics of school boards and, you know, have some laughs and have some good guidance. So he's the only retire list of the year. The takeaway from that is just, you know, enjoy your life with your love numbers up. So rest in peace, Bill.
Mr. Childress?
I'll go with congratulations with Ms. Jones, the all state and all Virginia Core students. I want to thank you to the bus drivers, the principals, and the staff for getting our students to and from school safely. I know sometimes it gets very hectic and complicated at the end of the day and you guys are doing a great job with what we have going on. So thank you. Thank you for the PTO for all your support and helping out when teachers and everyone and students need it. I do coach multiple youth teams here in the community and the kids came talking about Battle of the Books and Battle of the Classes. They're very excited by it. So that extra stuff that you do with them really does make a difference. They really do have fun. I think it really gets camaraderie around with the kids too and stuff to talk about. So thank you guys for spending your extra time because I know some of those go on at nights and that's extra duty. So thank you very much for doing that for the kids. And it's always good to hear about our academic, our performing arts, and our athletic accomplishments. So thank you for giving us those updates because it's great to hear.
Ms. Jones?
A lot of the same. Congratulations to Ms. Jones as well as our middle and high school district and all state cores delegates. That's really outstanding. Huge thank you to our bus drivers. That is tremendous and a very important role. So thank you for all doing the extra work there. Thank you, Mr. Ratliff and team, for looking into the funding for the playground. More to come on that. And thank you to our PTO for these outstanding fundraising numbers. I did not realize the volume of money that had been raised to date for this pavilion and that is pretty remarkable. So when asked in the community, our community often steps up and that is just an awesome thing to see. Finally, just wanted to give a huge plug, as CJ mentioned, Battle of the Classes was just absolutely delightful. And as a plug for future events, you know, it really does make a difference. You know, the getting the kids together out of school, great attendance. I saw school spirit, good sportsmanship on display. The musical talent of our singer and our stage band was just outstanding. And it's a lot of work. So to both Ms. Buntings and our gym teachers and all of our staff that were there, our guidance counselors dressed as maroon and gold fairies. It was just really delightful to see and I think really is important to the kids. It really does make a difference. So congratulations to our winter sports wrapping up. Many championships to be proud of. I know that we'll be hopefully seeing and hearing more about here. And good luck to our spring sports and activities getting started.
Mr. DeBose?
Again, echo what everybody else said. Few additional comments, you know, as Thatcher talked about, we've got a lot of stuff going on in all the schools. Don't forget that we need to continue to support all of those activities as well. It's really good to turn around and have the community get out there. And we do as a community, but just want to underscore that because sometimes spring gets left by the wayside at times. But, you know, make sure we all support that. Also want to thank the PPS PTO for everything they've done with Nurse Riggins. For a lot of people here and a lot of people in this community, she held a very special place with all of us. You know, if you grew up in Pecoson, you know Nurse Riggins. So very appreciative of everything that they've done with that. And yeah, that's it.
Dr. Burbage?
Yes, I'd like to first start off with thanking, congratulating Ms. Jones. I was impressed that, you know, she's in the honors German program. My family's from Germany, so I take a special interest in that. Also, I'd like to thank the PTO for their tremendous support and the pavilion going on at the primary school for Nurse Riggins. I know Nurse Riggins was a huge part of my son's life when he was there. And he was pretty upset when she passed. I'd also like to thank all the speakers that showed up. I'd like to see more speakers show up and speak their minds and let us know what they think. I'd like to congratulate all the winter sports and all of the great jobs and performances they did. I've been watching the wrestling team online just to kind of see how they've been doing and they've done really well. In regards to the winter sports, I'd like to thank all the parents and coaches that support the kids and the teams and also the bus drivers get them to and from these sporting events. We have a shortage of bus drivers here and we desperately need more. So I'd encourage anyone that has the appropriate credentials to please apply. We need you. And that's it.
For me, I would echo the sentiments of the board. It's great to be in a community where you can ask and people step up to the plate. So we're very lucky in many, many ways from parents to teachers, students, as well as community members. I would also like to say thank you to the literacy team and our teams who are working extra to help us select textbooks and curriculum and guide us through that. It's your expertise that we rely on and appreciate and, and just know that, you know, we appreciate that work. It's hard work and it's very important. And we thank you for that. And we thank you for your time tonight to speak with us on that. Also, one last thank you to the bus drivers. I had the privilege of running into one of my favorite bus drivers who drove me around Miss Geneva at my work the other day. And it's a relationship that I treasure and bring into my, as I'm heading into my 50th year, she was a bus driver of mine that hugs me and loves me like I was her own kid. And, you know, those relationships are important too. So thank you. Many thanks to those. Mr. Tillet?
I echo all of those sentiments and comments. I would like to note that last week was School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So I want to take this time to thank April for what an incredible job she does keeping us all straight and keeping our board heading in the right direction. So April, thank you so much. We appreciate you and all you do. As well, it is, this week, I believe, is School Board Appreciation Week. And you have a little token there from our staff just to say thank you. We appreciate very much your dedication, time, and energy serving on this board. It can often be a thankless job, but we appreciate you very much. And thank you for all you do.
Ms. Firth, any other material for board review?
No, ma'am.
Alright, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna head into work session after a quick.